Please rise and pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trakus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of August 15, 2017.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, August 15, 2017, Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so I'll move to Other Communications. Under Other Communications, item number one?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two?
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the order.
Item number three, Third District?
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Item number four, Third District?
Receive, file, and the agreements be approved as recommended.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Item number five, Second District?
Same motion, and that will be the order. Oh, I'm sorry. Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the order. Thank you.
Item number six, Fifth District?
Carries, same motion.
Item number five, Second District?
So ordered.
Item number seven, Fourth District?
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation with changes. We would like to make it a two-year lease, and necessary corrections need to be made as well.
Um, so ordered.
Item number eight?
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Yes, sir. Item number one, Third District?
Receive, file, and please draft the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth District?
Mr. Chair, unfortunately, this item did not make it to the add-on agenda early enough to meet the 24-hour deadline, so I just asked that it be held on the order of business.
Okay. So ordered.
Item number three, Seventh District?
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, Fourth District?
Receive, file, and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, Second District?
Receive and file, and we'll hold this on the order of business. It also did not make our 24-hour deadline for notice, and that will be the order. Uh, report to County Executive.
Looking further this evening.
You have no special committee reports, so we'll move to public forum.
We have five speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Okay, tonight we have five speakers. When your names called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Your speaker.
Our speaker this evening is Kelly Jones.
I'm Kelly Jones with Gateway Air Conditioning Contractors. I welcome the chance to speak with you again concerning the state of the journeyman mechanical license test and our proposed course correction, a mechanical contractor-only license. But first of all, I'd like to start today's comments with a thank you. I am grateful to Councilwoman Gray and her assistant, Toni Weaver, for looking into the correction status of the current mechanical ICC journeyman license test. Without a doubt, if this test is not corrected, St. Louis County will continue to set test takers up to fail, as the pass rate sits at 41%. Also, of no small matter, is the expense to the test takers and the companies they represent. This is a five-hour test with a $100 price tag for each test attempt, and most people take the test more than once. I can't tell you how many people have multiple attempts, but I can tell you that the 41% pass rate is artificially high, as it includes all test attempts that have led up to the successful test that moves that test taker into the journeyman status. So to be clear, if you were to look at a pass rate for those who passed on their first attempt, that rate would be much lower, and it's costing people a lot of money to repeat that test, not only in testing fees, but lost wages as well, not to mention the loss for a company's field technician. Once again, it's a five-hour test. The test is flawed and in need of revision. I look forward to a timeframe in which industry can expect the revised test to be put into the pipeline. And finally, last week, I introduced Gateway's proposed fix to what's become a broken and burdensome licensing process. Broken in that individuals can't go to work, and they remain underemployed, and burdensome for the individuals and contractors to navigate and maintain. Contractor-only licensing isn't new. It currently exists in the region, and yes, it already exists in St. Louis County, as the county's electrical trade is already using a contractor-only model. We are not proposing anything different that isn't already in play today. I'm asking you to simply suspend looking at mechanical licensing only in terms of what we're doing today, and ask you to be open to learning more about our proposed contractor-only licensing model. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Next speaker is Steve Anton.
My name is Steve Anton, 12 Blackpool. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm an architect. Architects are necessarily pro-development, pro-business, and it's no surprise that we like buildings. We're the profession charged with the responsibility of designing buildings that we, in which we govern, live, work, study, pray, and play. I have the privilege this year of serving as the St. Louis American Institute of Architects' President. We, the AIA, endorse the idea of the ICE facility proposed at Creve Court Lake Memorial Park. It keeps our membership employed and serves our greater community. We, the AIA, are confident, however, that the St. Louis Legacy ICE Foundation should build this facility elsewhere. The St. Louis County Park System and Creve Court Lake Memorial Park in particular is simply the wrong venue. The ICE facility as proposed is primarily an interior use and is unrelated to Creve Court Lake itself. Other existing uses, such as sailing, rowing, are obviously lake-related. The indoor ICE facility is a good idea; Creve Court Lake is simply the wrong location for it. This site is specifically wrong because it would remove parkland and wetland. We liked, we'd like the private sector to set it a good example by discouraging floodplain development. This has been the longstanding position of the American Institute of Architects. So we are proud to join with the Sierra Club, the Open Space Council, the U.S. Green Building Council, the Audubon Society, the Greenway Network, and the Missouri Coalition for the government to voice our opposition to this, to this development in this location. So far, we have over 16,000 signatures in, in, in support of moving this to a different location, so thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Next speaker is Mitch Leachman.
My name is Mitch Leachman. I live in Maryland Heights. I stood before you last week on behalf of the Creve Court Park Coalition and called out county officials for misleading the public regarding the destruction activities on 40 acres of parkland at Creve Court Lake Memorial Park for the proposed St. Louis ICE Center. To build the SLIC, the National Park Service must issue a waiver, and the St. Louis Partnership has filed paperwork for that waiver. Yet, the developers chose not to wait for the final determination before beginning site preparation for the SLIC, including grading and tree removal. As detailed last week, the Missouri DNR and Maryland Heights permits for those activities were issued for the St. Louis ICE Center. Now, we applaud Chairman Page's request for legislation to stop the current activities while you investigate further, but we do urge haste, however possible, haste in that legislation. Since last week, the park's maintenance building has been removed, and the ground intended for the SLIC is being razed to reduce the potential of future flooding for the proposed building. We ask that the council consider a few other questions and concerns, some of which were actually hinted at last week by yourselves. We are hopeful, and it is entirely possible, that the Park Service will not grant the waiver request. What happens then? Will the county restore the parkland? Will the Legacy ICE Foundation pay for that restoration? We would hope the answer to both those questions is yes. And by the way, who is paying for the current activities at the park? Since the efforts have been described as a stormwater drainage project that benefits the park, we're very concerned that the county may be footing the bill, perhaps even from the park's budget. In the event the Park Service grants the waiver, they will almost certainly demand mitigation property. As owner of the parkland, the county would most likely be obligated to perform that mitigation, but who will pay for it? Will Legacy ICE include that cost in the overall project, paid for by bonds, to be retired by facility revenue, and reducing further the chance of any revenue from the SLIC benefiting the park? Is that fair to the public? And if I may, one final request to the council. Whatever the outcome for the SLIC and this 40 acres of Creve Court Park, please don't let this happen again. Public parkland belongs to all of us and should never be parceled out in backroom deals with just the bare minimum of public disclosure. We should want as much input as possible when making such dramatic changes to these precious spaces. We believe that a thorough outreach and public forum process for the SLIC would have saved the 40 acres of Creve Court Park from the bulldozer. The ICE Center would be planned for some underutilized, non-parkland in the St. Louis region, and we would have a bright future as a hockey town. Thank you for your time, attention, and service.
Thanks, Mitch.
Next speaker is Amy Wilhel.
My name's Amy. I'm just a regular person out there in St. Louis that likes the park, and I'm here just to say that I really hope that we can somehow block the development of this ice rink at Creve Court Park. It's a wonderful place to go, just to have some peace. It's a big old chunk of land where you can go and feel like you've gotten away from it all. This is so important to people's, like, I guess, quality of life and peace of mind, and there's really not a number that can be placed on that. There's no value you can call for having a place to go in the county to unwind that's beautiful and quiet. If I didn't have Creve Court Park, and I've had it since I was like two, I grew up in the area, and we used to go there with my dad, have a lot of great memories, I mean, I wouldn't have any of that to, to claim, this pride of having this beautiful park in our area that's just such a part of my life and my family's life. My dad and I used to sail there when I was a kid. We used to take our dog there. Now I go there for walks and bike rides. But, I mean, I could go on and on about that, but I mean, I guess it's just not fair to me to think of a park as being a place, a public place for just everybody to go and enjoy and have that peace, when it's a private interest of just a small amount of people that wants to develop this land and have an ice rink for a private interest. It's also, and, I mean, we've talked about the fact that it's an indoor facility. I think that the money for the land was indicated to be used for outdoor recreation, but even without the topic of the money and what you're supposed to do, I just think it's just important to keep the land open, green space, regardless of whether there's a waiver granted or not. I just really, really feel strongly about that because everybody can go and enjoy the park. It's a social issue. It's an economic injustice issue because the use of the park is compromised when we develop it for a certain private interest. People can't enjoy it. This area, there's all this pollution, there's noise, there's traffic, the birds are going to be confused by all the lights at nighttime. It's going to affect the quality of the park for everybody to enjoy. You know, it's really not fair, you guys. I mean, if you look around, you're seeing a lot of people coming from the ice hockey community, and it looks like it's this huge contingent, but it's just that they happen to be producing a lot of people to come out and, and make it just really push for this. I can tell you, there's a lot of people that don't even know about this being on the table that would really, this room would be full of people if they knew about it, but it's kind of been something that's sort of been hush-hush. And I'm just here to speak on behalf of just every regular person who likes having that as a quiet, peaceful park to go to. This, this rink, I've seen pictures of it. I know it's going to bring in bulldozers. We've already seen the trees get cut down. It's a, I mean, the land, the wildlife is no longer going to be as pristine. The park is basically, it's, it's going to pretty much ruin the park. So I'm just asking you to please consider the sort of emotional argument that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Our speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have some things to mention about last week's resolution sponsored by Councilman Harder concerning Proposition P. To use a current and dumb expression, the resolution was a nothing burger. The meaningful involvement of the people the resolution mentions was needed before it was put on the ballot last year, not months after the election. The council at the time failed to give the proposal even the most basic scrutiny. With a tax increase that will raise $80 million a year and raise the sales tax to over 10% in some areas, you would think there would have been a lot of questions and concern from council members, but hardly none. When authorization for the tax was sought in the legislature, it was, it was only to be for the unincorporated county, and a quarter cent was the increase most mentioned. That would have raised $8 million a year. Yet Proposition P will raise 10 times that amount, with the county getting $46 million. Why the need for all the revenue? The legislation in Jeff City to authorize the tax said it would be for law enforcement purposes. Why wasn't the same language used with Proposition P? Campaign for Proposition P was about as dishonest and sleazy as it gets. Perhaps the most disgusting part of the campaign was the news conference with the county executive, Chief Belmore, prosecuting attorney Bob McCullough, and dozens of police chiefs, all coming together for one purpose, to deceive the voters of St. Louis County. No one cared how dishonest the proposal was, how sleazy the campaign was, or how many lies had to be told in order to pass this tax hike. According to the resolution, Proposition P passed by an overwhelming majority of voters. Despite spending nearly $1 million on a deceptive and dishonest campaign, only about 10% of the people in St. Louis County voted for the tax hike. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Tom. That concludes our public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, it'll take me a moment. I'd like to return to the add-on docket. The clerk informed me that I was mistaken. In fact, item number two was on the 24-hour docket, so I'd like to change my request and just note that I'd like the bill received filed and the County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Again, that's item number two on the add-on docket.
Can we go to that agenda without a motion? This has been...
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll accept that, and so ordered. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill number 212, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $9,662 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's home confinement program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 213, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $24,150 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Family Court's juvenile alternatives to detention program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $1,350.72 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of multidisciplinary training for the Family Court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 215, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $19,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of legal services for parents involved in the juvenile justice system, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 216, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $20,000 from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, appropriating same for support of programs to prevent HIV and STDs in adolescents, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance accepting a grant of up to $604,751.40 from the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, for the Summer Jobs Lead Program for Low-Income Youth. Depositing and appropriating said money is set forth herein, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 218, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $52,758.36 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Choices Drug and Alcohol Treatment Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 219, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with RCC Consultants Incorporated for consulting and engineering services in connection with implementation of the Emergency Communication System. Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to a contract with General Dynamics Information Technology Incorporated for design, provision, installation, testing, cutover, and support/maintenance services for next-generation 911 dispatch centers. Bill number 221, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD a sewer and stormwater easement for improvements related to its River De Pair/River City Casino Boulevard slope stabilization project. Bill number 222, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive on behalf of St. Louis County, Missouri, to submit an application and execute necessary documents to join the Missouri Clean Energy District. Bill number 223, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance appropriating up to $63,916,349.25 of the funds received from the State of Missouri from the half-cent sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number 24,245 for the Public Mass Transit Fund for Public Transportation Services and for County Police Services for the Bi-State Development Agency, Metro, from the amount received by St. Louis County from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Metro for use of $4,155,596 of such funds for security purposes, appropriating from the Transportation Trust Fund 50% of the amount received by St. Louis County from the sales tax levied by ordinance number 6,792 from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, net of the TIP transfers out and providing for the amounts and method of disbursements to Metro. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Move to perfection.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Bill number 189, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Bill number 203, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Perfect, bill number 203.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 203 is perfected.
Bill number 204, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 204.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 204 is perfected.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 205.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 205 is perfected.
Bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect, bill number 206.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Roll call.
Roll call granted.
Motion against bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Hold the roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
I'm going to abstain at this time until I get some additional information.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I vote no, but I'd like to have a committee hold on this to investigate this a little bit further before we do final.
We will look for an opportunity to have a committee hold. By the, um, when called to vote?
Yes, sir. On the motion for perfection of bill number 206, there are five ayes, one no, and one abstain.
Motion carries, bill number 206 is perfected.
Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 207.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 207 is perfected.
Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and Trakus.
I move to perfect, bill number 208.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 208 is perfected.
Bill number 209, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, Walton, Gray, Dolan, Trakus, and Harder.
I move to perfect, bill number 209.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 209 is perfected.
Bill number 210, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move to perfect, bill number 210.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 210 is perfected.
Bill number 211, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect, bill number 211.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 211 is perfected. Final passage?
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold, bill number 183.
Bill number 183 is held.
Bill number 201, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to, move for final passage of bill number 201.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 201, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 201 is finally passed.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 202.
Second.
Cheers, isn't it? Okay, I withdraw that motion, and we'll hold on the order of business.
I know.
Okay. We'll hold on the order of business, so ordered.
202.
202.
Yeah.
Thank you. Resolutions?
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have three this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
And one and two.
Two is mine.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move that we adopt resolution number three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move that we adopt resolution number three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one.
Please hold on the order of business. Same motion through item number four.
Item number five, seventh district.
Second. I hold on the order of business on item five.
So ordered.
Item number six, first district.
Oh, please.
So ordered.
Item number seven?
Uh, hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
And moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have five prepared orders this evening.
I move for adoption of orders numbers one and two.
Second.
All in favor of adoption of orders one and two? Say aye.